Let us pray. Lord, as we gather here today, we ask that you would be in the midst of our meeting. Help us to make decisions that will be pleasing to you and for the greater good of all of our citizens. Help us to be able to discuss the matters at hand in a reasonable way. Let this meeting be productive and help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds as we do the work set before us. These things we ask in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Mr. Lees?
To the Lord of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The approval of the minutes for September 3rd council meeting, can I get a motion on that?
I'll motion that we approve the minutes for the September 3rd, 2019 council meeting.
I'll second. It's the appropriate motion of September. If you see the approval of the minutes for September 3rd council meeting, all is favorable. Give them a sign of eye. All right, show your hand up. Everybody hand up.
Hand up.
Everybody hand up. Show your hands.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our number four approval of the minutes for agenda, meeting agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we accept the approval of the meeting agenda.
And I'll second. It's the proper motion to second. We approve the meeting agenda. A show of hands, please. Ladies or no ladies. Okay, we approve standing committees. D D R A, let's make some rock.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. And thank you to everyone who came out to the D D R A's Bringing Downtown Live Concert Series final event on Thursday. We had a fun time with our community karaoke party and classic cars from the Darlington Cruisers. A special thank you to Darwin's Juana's Club for stopping the event. Also, thank you to our sponsors, Pepsi of Florence, Wilson Senior Care, and Cumulus Broadcasting. Thank you to the Fire Department, Recreation Department, Police Department, Street and Sanitation Departments, and to the D D R A Board of Directors for supporting this effort. We will have a concert committee wrap-up meeting this month. So if you are interested in participating in the future or have any suggestions for improving our events, please contact my office. This year, the D D R A will offer its members a special referral bonus for all new paid memberships for 2020. Each new member paid by February 29th will equal a free ticket to the 2020 Taste of Darlington. And the member who has the most referrals will receive a pack of tickets to the Southern 500, which in 2020 will kick off the playoffs for the season. Businesses, individuals, civic groups, and churches are invited to join as members. They can give me a call or send an email or go online to buildupdarlington.org. We will feature your news, employee recognition, sales, new products, special hours, and events with people that are interested in Darlington as well as TV stations, radio stations, and newspapers through our text and email news alert system. The next monthly Members Breakfast will be 8:00 a.m. Wednesday, October 30th, the day before Halloween, at Taki's Diner. The cost will be free for members and $5 for others. This is our last breakfast for the year, so we would love to see as many members there as possible.
What's the date on that?
October 30th, the day before Halloween.
Now, 8:00 a.m.?
8:00 a.m. Ghouls and ghosts will take over downtown from 4:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, October 24th for Scare on the Square, our downtown trick-or-treating event in collaboration with the Darlington Recreation Department and area businesses. This is the week before Halloween. While we will have the square blocked off for the children, any business, church, civic group, or nonprofit can set up a table on the courthouse grounds if they would like to to also distribute materials to the children. Just contact my office to register. Then get ready for the holiday season on Thursday, November 21st for Shop Small Downtown Open House on the Public Square with a Santa, DJ, snow, and more. It's the 10th anniversary of Shop Small, so we want to have a big turnout and support all of our local businesses. Any business that's interested in giving us any kind of flyers, menus, contact cards to give out at the event, we certainly will take those up until the week before. American Express generously gives 200 tote bags that say Shop Small on them, and they're really nice tote bags. They're kind of heavier canvas, and we stuff those with the local business information and hand those to everybody until we run out. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Just in time for my favorite holiday, Halloween. Okay, the chamber is back open. We've had it thoroughly cleaned, although we do have another leak. We have two more leaks. Mr. Ben is coming back tomorrow to look at the new one, but we're back open. Thursday, October 3rd, beginning at 5:30 until 7:00, the Chamber of Commerce is pleased to announce a Business After Hours hosted by Patriot Chevrolet, formerly known as Audi Brown. Patriot Chevrolet in the Chamber invite everyone to come out, meet the owners, and network with other business leaders and community leaders. As always, refreshments will be served. Bring your business cards and register to win door prizes, compliments of Patriot Chevrolet. We're really excited to have Christina Van Ness. It's a female-owned business. It's rare in the car industry. But come out and meet her. She's a very, very nice lady. South Pearl is doing the refreshments from Pumpkin. Several other local businesses will have wares there that night. I'm also pleased to announce a ribbon cutting on Wednesday, October 9th, at 11:30. Y'all got invitations today, tonight, for M U S C Primary Health Darlington. They're going to be located at 301 Pearl Street, just right down the road. After the ribbon cutting, everyone is asked to stay for a small reception to meet and greet the new staff and see the new facilities. We are very pleased to welcome M U S C Primary Health to our town. We want to make sure they feel welcome. So if y'all please make sure in attendance. The new doctor is pretty young. Well, he's young to me, of course. He's young, and they're very excited. I met the practice manager today. It's Brad's wife. He works for Todd Hardy. Everybody knows him. It's his wife. She's a Darlingtonian, and she is wonderful. So please make sure y'all stop by if you have a chance and meet him. Also, the Toast of Darlington is presented by Manheim Darlington this year. It will be held on November the 14th. I love this event. The band this year is Jelly Side Up. They played at the Tate Place of Society Hill. They claim with glowing recommendations. To date, we have over 15 cooks lined up to cook. Some of the cooks are Todd Hardy and from South Pearl, Reverend Emmanuel Simon. He's won this four years in a row. Sugar Rush from Hartsfield, The Country Club, Sarah's Porch, The New Wing Place right in front of the Palmetto Sub in Rose's parking lot, just to name a few. I hope Mayor Heinz will be there to give the toast to our beautiful Darlington as well as the mayors from Lamar and Society Hill. The Chamber has reduced the amount of tickets from $25, I mean from $35 to $25 this year. So we're hoping that helps fit with everybody's pocketbook, and a cash bar will be available. So we're not including alcohol in the ticket price this year because not everyone drinks. We noticed that last year. So the tickets are $25, and a cash bar will be available. Light up Darlington. It's that time again. We've met three times. We're gearing up to do this again. We're hoping that more people will come out to the meetings, get involved, get excited. We've got a lot of things on the burner this year. We're going to light up the square. The county has pruned the trees along the courthouse grounds. We have some surprises. But please, if you want to get involved, Bryant's been there. We welcome his input. We'd love to have your input. Check the Darlington Chamber's website. I always post when the meetings are. Please come. We'd love your input. This is a county-city project. We really would love your input. We'd love your help. We need help putting lights up. We need help with just vision. If you want to throw a few dollars in the coffers, we'd love that too because we go on donations. And as always, we welcome suggestions, comments, and volunteers on this planning committee because it is ours. Thank you.
What time is the toast?
The toast will be 6:30 to 8:30. So you can come, and you can still be home in time to kiss your kids and tuck them in bed. But always, it runs over because somebody wants to do karaoke in the streets, just saying. It always happens. And it could be Bryant.
Yeah.
He's always dancing.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Uh, simply you should just speak. We have one. It's around the park.
Me?
Yes.
Yes.
There's, um, Thomas Street has, after the, all the improvements were done and the road is finished, we have a rather wide-open area that in the future, if ever there needs to be any work done on the underneath services, that area should be kept clear. But the area is large enough that within our long-term planning, one of the things that was mentioned was more passive parks are required within the city of Darlington according to the master plan. So, you know, I saw this area, and I thought, this is a perfect little area to be able to use as one of Darlington's master, uh, passive parks to fit in with our master plan. And the only thing that's really required to start, this is not a 30,000 play equipment. You just don't do that in passive parks. But it would be a nice, small neighborhood area where we just have to mow the grass, start and to kind of do it in phases, like the front part of the park right now or that area would kind of be the entrance. And we just would like to plant a few trees, put some grass seed out there, keep it mowed. So if you ever have to do any service work there, it'll be easy access. If we just leave it un cared for, you're going to end up with a lot of trees. Then you're going to have to rip the trees out to get to the substructure. So it kind of makes sense to keep it mowed. And Darlington being a tree city, USA, I know we're always trying to find places for trees. You have some natural trees along the sides of this border. And to do like a quarter of like crepe and marl, which is something that flowers in springtime and December for the residents would increase the attractiveness of rather just having an empty lot. And it would be a nice passive park. I know funds are tight, so that's why it's kind of going to be phased in bit by bit. And I just wanted you to have kind of a little idea of phase one, and then we can work on it. It's, it's not that exciting. It's just kind of a square with some dots. But it shows you, you know, kind of the general location, that the trees would be on either side. The center section would become, would remain open. And that just gives you a rough idea of what could be going. That's how it already has looked. So that's, that's my whole little seal, just to give you a better understanding of sort of the vision for that little section. Not that we're putting in playgrounds or ball fields, just a quiet area for the residents. And, you know, I put in some estimated pricing, which you can see isn't much at all in the scheme of things. So hopefully you like it. If not, tell me what you do like, what you don't like, and how you'd like to see that area improved. That's it.
Mr. Stowe?
Thanks for listening.
Thank you. I understand. You got something?
I just wanted, wanted to say, is this sufficient for us to go forward? You know, we left council last time saying that we needed to have something, some kind of budget, some kind of idea of what it would cost to do whatever we were planning.
Well, it just says, uh, $12 per tree. And $200, and then, um, average about $400.
I've got no problem with that. I don't know if we even have to vote on it because Howard, it's under $2,000.
You know, it beats you as far as the plan and how much money is in that kind of thing.
Okay.
Appreciate it so very, very much. Rhonda, thank you.
Just to be clear, we're fine with you moving ahead with it or you're fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay, number seven. Want to have public hearing, ordinance 2019-18 Special Property Tax Assessment for rehabilitation historic properties.
Mayor, ask the executive director for the Darlington Downtown Revitalization Association. They would like to share their support for this passage of this program. It would certainly create more incentives, especially in our downtown, but all over the city would greatly appreciate you all's support.
We have, did you hear what? What about the mall?
Oh.
I knew Hartsville's open.
I know Hartsville's open. I hadn't heard.
County, the county is doing it, and what about the mall?
I hadn't heard.
But everybody has the lien on it before that.
Yes, ma'am.
All cities, all cities.
Yes, all the taxing units take some notes.
Okay.
I know previously John Mill had some questions. Did we get those resolved?
We did. And Howard has put a provision in here so that if the property gets the tax related under the Bailey Bill, and the homeowner does not maintain it in good appearance, as has happened on some, with some of the properties in this district, then they would lose their, um, tax advantage. So it kind of gives them additional to say, but if they take care of it. One of the questions I had is if somebody came along and bought it from the original owner, would the, would the benefit stay with them in the end? Yes. I think what happened the last time around is someone or another, and it went off. We may have missed page three and page six and things like that, so that created some confusion.
Okay, anybody at the chair will recognize you. Like, show your hands if you have to say something.
I'm going to make a motion. My apologies, and I'd like to motion that we approve on the public hearing ordinance 2019-
We're not out yet. Got to seek the best possible standing there.
It's still in the vote.
It's still in the public hearing.
My apologies.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Going once, twice? Okay, now we'll go to number B. And so with the second reading of orders, 2019-18 Special Property Tax Assessment for rehabilitation historic properties. Now, Mr. Gunn, you want to say something now before we go?
I would like to motion that we approve the second reading ordinance 2019-18 Special Property Tax Assessment for rehabilitated historic properties.
I'll second. Go to the property motion is second, that, um, second reading of orders on 2019-18 Special Property Tax Assessment for rehabilitation historic properties. A show of hands. So no names, so motion carries the second reading, okay? Thank you for that. Okay, number C. Um, it's very long. Did you get a chance to look at it in your package? Outdoor lighting order. Um, the second reading of orders, 2019, that 21 outdoor lighting order. Mr. Gunn, you want to say something about that question before you go?
I would defer to Ms. Rock since she works closely with those folks, and I think they made some changes to the ordinance.
As requested by Council, we did change that line that Mr. Milling pointed out to rebuilding official as opposed to the city. So those changes were made. And this will help codes enforcement better be able to serve the city.
With the change just made, um, codes enforcement office, um, the second reading of orders, 2019-21 Outdoor Lighting Orders. Can I get a show? Make a motion. Yeah, make a motion for it.
Madam Mayor, I will move that we have approved the second reading of ordinance 2019-21, the outdoor lighting ordinance.
I second. Property motion is second. Second reading of orders, 2019-21 Outdoor Lighting Orders. A show of hands, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, D, second reading of orders, 2019, that's 22 property donated. Excuse me, one minute, Chair. Thank you. Um, second reading of orders, 2019, that's 22 property donated. 165-10-03-037, Chavon Street Extension. That's on down near the, um, Gander Swimming Pool. So can I get a, um, motion for that?
I make a motion that we accept the second reading of orders, 2019-22 Property Donation. 165-10-03-037, Chavon Street Extension.
I'll second.
It's the property motion is second, that we received the second reading of orders, 2019, that 22. Okay.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Seager's just pointed out that in the description of the unfinished business as to the property tax map number, that that has a designation, last three numbers, 037, whereas the ordinance says 057. So we just need to correct it so that we've got the correct tax map number.
Okay, correction. It was, it was, in the papers, it's, um, 05, but on the agenda, it's 07. Right, okay.
It's 03.
It's 03, okay.
Is it 03 or 05?
It should be 05.
It should be 05, okay.
Please, I'll respect the motion. My fault.
Okay. Um, second reading of orders, 2019, that's 22 property donated, donated, excuse me. 165-10-03-057, Chavon Street Extension. Can I get a motion on that?
I make a motion that we accept, second reading orders, 2019, that's 22 Property Donation. 165-10-03-057, Chavon Street Extension.
I'll second.
Okay, it's the property motion is second, that we see the second reading on the orders, 2019, that's 22 Property Donation, 165-10-03-057, Chavon Street Extension. All in favor? Show your hands. Motion carries. Thank you. New business. We had those nice ladies out there. South Carolina Sweet Potato Festival funding request. Julia Lane, Miss Ginger, Trigio, Dr. Pala.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Honorable Mayor Jorge Heinz and members of the council. It's so good to be here with you. Thank you for being leaders for the city of Darlington. Thank you for what you do. We are here representing the Pilot Club of Darlington, and we are the proud sponsors of the South Carolina Sweet Potato Festival, which will take place this year on October 12th. And we hope you will all be there. I will be working in the floral cake, so come by and see me.
I'll miss you. I'll make sure.
We have written a letter, which you've received a copy of. We appreciate all the support we've received from the city of Darlington in the past. We don't know what we do without the city, street department, furthest in trash cans, and the recreation department bringing our stage up there and, um, and bringing the leakers and the chairs and getting us all set up with the tables and everything that we need. We've also received a lot of monit-, some monetary support throughout the years. And in the past, we've looked back at our records, and in 2016 and 17, we received $750. And then we look at the last two years, and we received zero, um, two years ago. And I understand from speaking with Howard that this is, the request was not received. There was some mistake there that it's not received. And then last year, we received a contribution of $400. Well, for this year, $400. And while we appreciate that, we really feel that this is an important event that takes place in the city of Darlington that brings, that helps the local economy. We bring in, uh, the newspaper, TV station estimates 20,000 to 30,000 people in our area. And people come in from out of state, or vendors come from different states. And we feel that this helps our economy and brings people in. And we just feel like that we wanted to be here to ask for your support for this great event that, that helps so many people in the area with the money that we raise. We do, the Pilot Club is proud to do a lot of things to help people in the community, and you can see the list there. And it seems that in the last few years, advertising has gotten more expensive. And in keeping with our cost, it, it seems like we're making a smaller and smaller amount. We're putting out more and bringing in less, and so it's harder to give back to the community. And that's why we're coming to you and requesting $5,000 this year. And Ginger wants to tell you about her shirt and talk a little bit more.
This year's, but then, we don't often do this. In fact, I don't know if, the t-shirts always show up the day of the festival. But this year, as with everybody else, we are honoring our first responders. And that's our t-shirt. So when y'all come out to the festival Saturday week, this is the t-shirt that we'll have available for y'all. We have, like Judy has said, we appreciate everything that y'all do for us and have done for us in the past. But for a group of little old ladies that work really, really hard.
Yes, you do.
We, we really need some, some additional support.
And John, I hope you know if Denise Sweet take pies from the church event.
You know, the boys in charge over the years are very rewarding for the citizens of Darlington. People come near for the Company Sweet Potato Festival. It's always crowded in downtown, so we know it's well, take a look. 38 year, right?
Ma'am?
38?
37.
37 years.
37 years. I thought it was 37, you said 38. You missed one. It's a good story. Or either we, maybe we.
We weren't there at the beginning. J C started it, but then we took over.
Okay, but you know the historian in the family.
Well, you know it's something in Darlington that Cecil Chandler and Joey Salibi put together. It's got to be.
So anyway, Council, what to anybody, Mr. Gunn, what can we afford to give?
We have $612,000 in that, in that election account. We've given out $15,000 for the pre-fest. We give $10,000 for the Veterans Memorial. We give $5,000 for the Cotton Mill Memorial. We just gave $5,000 for the Suck My Plum Doctor this year. That's what you've done so far this year.
So now, Council, you get the $5,000?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we increase the $2,000 in my budget for the Sweet Potato Festival to the amount of $5,000. Could that $5,000 come out of the hospitality tax form?
I'll second. All of us say so. It's the property that we give the Sweet Potato Festival these nice minutes, working hard. Working hard, five thousand dollars, that's the hospitality money. All in favor? Let me see, shout out a side of hands. Show hands. Okay, we have no names, so you got it.
Thank you so much. Come to the fun pec area, you'll get a free fun pec.
Yeah, I'm everywhere else.
P.D. Coalition's proclamation.
Hello, everybody. My name's Tia. I'm the victim advocate here in Darlington. Um, besides the proclamation, I just wanted to let y'all know that we're having an event on the nineteenth of this month at ten o'clock. And that's going to be our Domestic Violence Awareness Month Walk. It's going to be at the courthouse. So everybody come out and see us.
How does it start?
Starts at ten.
What date?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth? October nineteenth.
It's going to be at the courthouse.
What time?
Ten.
What time?
Ten.
Oh, I got that one already. Okay.
I just want to introduce myself. My name is Dolores Bess. I am the trauma counselor for Darlington County. Um, I'm stationed here in Darlington City as well as in Hartsville. Um, most people don't know, or have been saying that they don't know that we have, uh, counseling services here, right here in Darlington, and it is free.
It's located where?
On one oh five Orange Street.
Does your business card?
Yes, ma'am.
And I just put some brochures out in the lobby, um, and it's got our numbers on it, too.
May I put yours? Yes, ma'am. And my cell number is on here. So if you have somebody and they're not, they're not willing to give you information or to tell you anything, all you have to do is tell them to give me a call and I'll do the rest for you. I take that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, briefly. A proclamation declaring October first two thousand nineteen as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October. Uh, whereas domestic violence is a serious social problem that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over four million Americans each year. And whereas one of three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas children that grew up in a violent home, homes, are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, law enforcement and co-costs foster care, sick leave, unemployment, and non-productivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by the mayors of the municipalities of Darlington County, South Carolina, proclaiming the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges the citizens of Darlington County to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our communities. Glory C. Highs, Mayor of Darlington. Ms. Rock, what y'all getting, comb over there?
Stand. You see those two pillars? There's like kind of a thing in between there.
Do a great job. Okay, number C, P.R.T.A. Board Reap- Ms. Rock? Oh, that's to be you? Okay, well, Mr. Gullman.
Judy Alexander has served on the P.R.T.A. Board for approximately eight years. And she serves as chairperson. Uh, had a nice note from the new director on Don Strickland recently with a good job he's done. Her, her time is technically up and they want to have her reappointed, and I concur. Um, I think we've had a better recommend board since I've been here. Uh, I'd like to recommend to council that they approve Judy Alexander for another term on the P.R.T.A. Board Representative.
I got a call, I got a call from her and she would like to have her again. And I told her I would do my best to see that she got again, because she's doing an excellent job. So, um.
I'll motion it.
I'll make a motion that we accept Judy Alexander for another term on the P.R.T.A. Board Reappointment.
I'll second.
It's the property motion that we received, um, Ms. Judy, um, excellent on the P.R.T.A. Board Reappointment. All in favor? Raise your hand. Any needs, you'll prove. Thank you. You can't move. You got, you got to sign a paper. You got to get her a second. You can't use that second. You can't move. She didn't move. She didn't move. Okay. I thought you had a little thing up there.
I was, yeah, I was, I was following.
Okay, well, she had enough to get in there. Okay, um, D, Old Florence Highway Softball Field, Councilwoman.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks.
Lee and I and Howard were discussing some information about putting some playground equipment at the Boines Manor, the softball field that's at, near Boines Manor. Because of the fact that they're going to stop back using the field and we, we still own the field. So we're going to stop back. They're going to stop back using the field. So Lee's going to present some information to us about, uh, this diagram that he gave us.
Thank you. Um, about, about three weeks ago, we, we found out we were getting, there was a possibility of us getting, uh, five acres back in the softball field. And Vacas approached me about, um, first of all, she said, what are we going to do there? And I had to get some clarification on if we could do certain things there or not. Um, as long as it's a recreational area, we can do whatever we want to there, as long as it remains a recreational area. Um, but we didn't play ball there this year because we felt that we didn't own it. We didn't want to put nobody at risk, so we didn't use it. Uh, but since we do own it, we do plan on using it because it does make life a little bit easier to, to have our adults and our older guys go over there and play. Um, keep them off Blue Streets on them because it, it's crowded at Blue Street. So we're, we're planning on using it as a ball field. But, um, it's Vacas wanted to add a playground there. So I went out and I got a quote, and it's a, a state contract quote. It's from the same people that done all our parts, um, play park structures. What you see in the diagram is exactly what they're, they're quoting on. Uh, and, and the good thing about that is, right now, it's half price.
Okay.
So, um, we're getting that for forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-three cent installed. Just wanted to say the play park structure.
How's the bond money?
How's the bond, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Here, I got it.
Do we have any questions?
I was going to ask a question as to what is the age group of people living in that general area?
Millie, I would be, I, I wouldn't even know.
No.
I know there's some kids out there going back to the cell.
A lot of kids in Boines Manor. A lot of kids in that area.
I don't, I.
Well, I'm sorry, ma'am.
I can't give an educated answer on that to the exactly how many kids are in that area.
I was approached about three months ago, um, as to why it wasn't cut. And, um, because you said the kids were playing. They would say that the kids were playing out there at Boines Manor.
At that time, we hadn't cut it. We, we were not, that, that was not our property anymore as far as we were concerned. And that's why that was not being cut by the recreation department. I know the street department went out there after that.
Right.
And since then, we, we, uh, had it bush hogged and it is back on our schedule to be cut. So we, that, that will be taken care of. And, you know, once, now that they know that we own it, we can send. We've been having this bad problem. Now, that's sarcastic. Just to go away and let you know of overcrowding at Virgil Wells Stadium because everybody wants to practice on game day out there when they're playing. And we, you know, this is that time of the year where Harpsville, Lamar, all of those teams are coming in, so we've had a lot of cars. So now we can relocate them to over there. They can practice over there and come back over to the field.
Well, um, Boines Manor, they have a lot of children out there.
Okay.
So I know that it was greatly appreciated. And in the area. And they were just completely out there to just feel, just have a feel there.
Right.
Now you put something out there and that would, you know, be good.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Seager.
You, you mentioned about a lot of traffic, a lot of cars. How you go, do you have room out there to locate this playground where it will be safe for the children?
Now, the, where, where we, we put it would be safe for the children because when you come into second entrance there, if you're, if you're going toward Florence, when you come in that second entrance, it would be in that back corner right there. And we would fence it off just like we have the other parks to keep cars from going all the way through there. Um, there is enough room out there for parking and that.
Very good. Very good.
I think it's a great, though, suggestion.
Do we own any land more in the middle, in the heart of the Kane neighborhood?
Say what? Say it again. What'd you say?
I think the idea is to, um, give an area to play for the other side of fifty-two from your, um, ward in, uh, Kane neighborhood essentially. Or is it to, for Boward Manor's area? Because what my worry is, I know that there's potential business coming in to the property beside. They plan on potentially expanding the roads for a whole bunch of tra- trailers to be coming through there.
Oh.
Um, and so I would want to put a playground right beside it. And the majority of the children would have to cross Old Florence Highway. So I didn't know if there was a property that's more centrally located to the neighborhood that would have to cross.
We haven't known anything in that area other than lived and home stations.
Okay.
So, but we do own the old, the old dump property, which is off Friendship Road, but.
That's burger.
That's a city.
That's way behind.
That's by the way, that's a dump.
Um, that location is a good location because the kids, um, from second three, second street, third street, and the alphabet streets, it's more convenient for them to go away from the highway instead of towards the highway.
Fifty-two, I agree with that.
So that would be a better location.
I'd agree with that.
And from where he's speaking about putting it at, if you ever been to Boines Manor, it's at the back of the property. So when you come into the doors, when you come into that baseball field and come to park, from either side you come in, the parking is better at the front of the, of the, of the, um, field. He's speaking about at the far end of the field. So it's totally safe for them to play there and, and you can park and still be safe.
So you're talking about behind the, um.
Down the third baseline. That entrance down the third baseline coming in, downfield entrance.
Gotcha.
Anybody else? So that's at the very back end of the block. Mr. Bitter, rich hand.
Have you identified a refunding source?
I didn't see nobody else's hand.
I think, um, hospitality tax was mentioned to be used for that.
How does that fit in with tourism?
Mr. Bitter, I can't hear you.
My question was how does the hospi- how does this particular park fit in with tourism for the hospitality money to be used?
We.
Bond money.
Well, it, it, bond money is age tax money. It is all the same thing, am I right? Um, we will have to come up with a plan. And I think Bryant has already started working on that plan. Um, and you're going to have to connect these parks. You're going to have to do a trail system. You're going to have to do something along that line to draw people in to want to use these, to want to visit these parks. And I say parks, plural, because you, you're going to have to tie Boward Manor to Hampton Street, or you're going to have to tie Boward Manor to Virgil Wells. Now, Virgil Wells is, is, is a little bit different story. You don't really have to go over there. We're already bringing in people at Virgil Wells. With the Alumni Association, with football games, P.D. Vikings, they bring people in from Virginia, North Carolina. They got a team coming in from Fayetteville this Saturday. So Virgil Wells is a little bit different, but we could connect. We, we've got to do something that's going to say, come visit us. If we don't do that, in my professional opinion, yeah, it's not, it's not hospitality drip.
Well, from, from centralizing where Boines Manor is to Hampton Street, it's a lot easier to tie a trail from Boine Manor to Hampton Street.
Absolutely.
Than from Hampton Street to anywhere else in downtown.
Absolutely. Absolute.
So if you're talking about tying the trails together.
We could, and I know none of this has happened yet. We're speaking out at city council, but if we, we're so lucky as to get the Brunson-Darcon property in the future, there is another way to tie into that. Because we already own land all the way there. And I think we are one homeowner away from getting easement across Main Street. And then you can tie three different areas in the city together. So to answer your question, it by itself, I don't think you can do hospitality tax. But it, within that structure, most certainly could be used as hospitality tax.
We could go across the dump property and then get from there to the P.D. Land Trust property. If it could somehow work, I apologize. To try to tie it into the trail process, you could. You could. If you were willing to use the hospitality funds and tie it into tourism, you could go from the P.D. Land Trust property over to the old, um, dump property. And then you could potentially tie it in to the Williamson Park Trails. Um, so there's a potential to run that trail down Swift Creek.
Everything's potential.
If we, uh, I, I, I just don't see, if we know that this is what needs to be done, what are we waiting on? I mean, if you got a plan going that's connected, we know that this is one of the criterias for, for keeping the money and getting the money. I mean, we can't be at, at another park or something else in the recreational.
And I'll say this.
I'm only joking, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
If we know that that's criteria, let's, let's move forward.
I'll say this. As Recreation Director for Darlington County, I do not think that we can have enough places for kids, adults, seniors, whatever, to go out and enjoy themselves. I do not, I firmly believe that. But what I would like as Recreation Director is from the beginning, from two thousand thirteen till now, we have talked about a hundred different things. What I would like to do is sit down with some of y'all and let's put a plan together of exactly what we're going to do. So we can work toward that, so we're not, I'm not getting a, a piece from this one and a piece from this one and a piece from this one. And then we're trying to go in a hundred different directions and nothing's, nothing's being finished. And I can promise you this, my guys hate to see me come out there and jump them because that, you know, they're moving from one place to the other and we're going back and forth. What I would like to do is sit down and let's put a plan together. And let's say, this is what we're going to do. And let's work toward doing that. Um, because I don't want to waste, and I, it's not a waste, but I don't want to spend my time spinning my wheels on something that necessarily the council as a whole does not agree on. I want it to be something that everybody's united on and we move forward with. So that way, we don't get, and I use this example today, and I know it's a terrible example, but I'm gonna tell you what I say. I give my kid a hundred dollars, and I told him to go spend it. And I love Dollar General, and I love the dollar store, because I can go there. But it's not the same as me going to Walmart and getting something big that's gonna last, or going to the dollar store and getting a bunch of stuff that's tore up in a day or two. So let's do it. Let's do it, sit down with me, tell me what you want. I might not agree with it, you probably don't, you not gonna agree with me, but at the end of the day, we're gonna do what's right. And we're gonna do what's right by Dalton. There's a lot of needs as far as recreation goes. We're having our annual baseball, softball meeting right now. That's five hundred kids right there that are having a blast. And I heard Brantley telling them, our A.D., I heard him telling the people that were at the meeting a while ago, "We are top ten in the country as far as Little League charters go. We are top ten in the country as far as Little League." I want you to think about that, in the United States of America, Dalton County is one of the top ten biggest charters in the country. And we're playing on ball fields that were built in the seventies. With the same sixties, I'm wrong, sixties, with the same bathroom facilities. So there's needs, there's needs out there. We just, we've got to focus on what we want to do. And I know baseball and softball, everybody's cup of tea. I know you don't wanna take your grandkids somewhere and play. I know those kids on First and the Alphabet Streets want a safe place to play. I want them to have a safe place to play, and I know you do too. But what I don't wanna do is just shake it up and throw it out there. I want it to be planned out, so if you would, you know, let's put two or three people on a committee, let's pound a plan out and get it done.
Can we do something maybe October fourteenth? Is that a good time?
To have a planning meeting?
Yeah. October fourteenth, Monday, October fourteen.
I'm good.
Can anybody come at five?
No, it would have to be six thirty, six. I could do six easily.
Why don't we make it like a Friday evening, or we start in the afternoon maybe?
Friday evening.
Make it four hours, that gives us more time to go, and nobody's checking in.
Thursday, October the tenth at six o'clock.
Fourteen.
What about the thirteenth? I mean, tenth, I'm sorry, October the tenth at six o'clock.
I can do the tenth. I have a little surgery going on that day.
October the tenth.
October the tenth.
I'm gonna hold up to it.
Is that the debate? Two hours to go before everything needs to be done. I have to anything, maybe Saturday morning, how about that?
When?
Saturday morning. We'd get breakfast, and then we'd stay, maybe go up to the rest of the day. Am I right?
So when, I mean, what's that?
The first thing I gotta keep so far is October the second. No, it was November second.
November the second and ninth are bad for me.
November second, okay, okay, okay. Okay, the second's bad for you, November the second's bad for you. Okay. What about October the twenty-eighth?
Can we just, I mean, we gotta do it now, I mean.
Can we do that after, I was just gonna say after the election?
Yeah.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I love y'all's eagerness on the trail, and I'm fine for as early as possible work on that, but we postponed it a month, month and a week. Everybody's life probably isn't going to cover.
We'll discuss it later then.
I'll be fine.
Thank you. All right. So are we discussing the trail later, or are we discussing the whole idea of playing? Tying it all together, yes. So we're gonna postpone, talking about making a vote on the equipment until after we do this? After we have planned that part? That's what you're saying you wanna do?
I'm saying I'm doing whatever y'all wanna do.
And I got some time that I can meet, but nobody can see me.
Yeah, she's talking more about the equipment for a plan.
She's talking about this equipment.
Not so much about the plan, no.
Yeah.
I'll be fine to meet in November, I'd just like to meet afternoon, November ninth evidently.
October the tenth, because we missed a minute.
Just had a question, I was wondering if we had a source of funding that could be utilized to pay for this equipment? And then if, once we get things tied together, so we don't have an issue of whether or not we would have to pay back hospitality funds if we don't have things tied together, we then use the hospitality funds to put back into a different fund. The best I can tell you on that is it would have to be taken from a general fund. We don't have the money for that. If you wanna take it, there's two, a candidate can take it from hospitality tax collection account or hospitality tax fund. Either one of them should be. Well, the hospitality bond account's gotta be spent by June twenty twenty. But it's also gonna be spent on matters that are related to bringing tourism in. Well, I don't know if the bond itself was written, it said it was baseball and other recreational facilities. Now, I know this, I think we came down this road before where the city of Kansas got sued once, because they put their money into a YMCA, and it wasn't considered. They had studies and were able to show how it did draw people in, and so the studies they had kept them out of hot war. As my first boss, one of George, told me, I can do whatever I want to tell him to sue. If y'all want to do that, y'all go ahead and do it, and then worry about it later, or y'all punt, I mean, but the question that Ms. Backus was asking was about the playground.
Okay, I'm saying, okay. We, so we are all okay about the recreational part. So I'm saying all this is, is to, if we know we're gonna, we're gonna do something that is recreational, that'll fit what the hospitality money is about.
It may be as long as the tourism part of it.
Right, but all of it is, everything that we're gonna do there, we know what it is. All I'm saying is, let's move on. If we need to go ahead and approve the, while this is half price, approve these, and then still the plan is to make all this meet.
I think you're, I think you're good until December thirty-first. Product must be shipped by December thirty-first to get it to that box.
All right, well, I think you said, I'm just trying to move it.
I'll let you, yeah. But I don't wanna punt to the definite future, but I'm fine for punting into the mid-November range, have a group session together and discuss this, and a variety of ideas of what we have for the future of Dalton as far as recreation goes. But we just can't be spending all over the place, just not, you know, some way to attract it or attach it to tourism. Unless we can find another funding source.
Well, as far as the track and the tourism, we already built two other parks, that same difference. Two parks are parks. All of them attracted tourism in that case.
And this park, this, this park, in defense of that, we were gonna build the ball field right there.
Right.
And, you know, we had talked about expanding the trail to Hampton Street, through Hampton Street, over to what we were talking about before, Brunson Garden. So when the seventeen and a half acres got sold, the only thing that's changed now is the route. We probably just gonna have to go out the back. But that was the whole thing with that. Now, like I said earlier, Virgil Wells is, we're generating tourism dollars over there right now.
I would see that as an issue.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, Virgil Wells is standalone. It doesn't have to be connected to Florence Road or even the Hampton Street. We're gonna have to connect Florence Road, and even then, we're gonna have to show that people are coming in to use that too. So just because we put a trail here, doesn't necessarily mean that people are coming in to use it. We've gotta make it to where, we've gotta make it special enough that we're bringing people from outside to in. And regardless of that, you build something like that, people might live here, so.
Yeah, well, help me understand what the issue is tonight. Whether or not we have the correct funding coming out of the hospitality, or the general, what do you call it?
The general fund.
General funds.
I don't think there's an issue even by myself.
Because there's a whole lot of conversation going on, and it seems like we're not sure that we can get this based on hospitality. So do we need to wait until we tie in these trails you're talking about?
No.
And I think her question is, can you go ahead and get the equipment now?
I was gonna say, yes, I do, as long as we're committed to doing something. As far as that goes. As far as, as we are committed to making it. A tourist attraction.
Make the motion.
The funding is gonna be coming from hospitality and not from the ball field bond, is that correct? I don't think so. Y'all designate with twenty months. I think we need to be sensitive about that bond that we took out to build all these ball fields that we haven't produced yet. And we don't need to be taking money away from that if there's a snowball's chance that we can build ball fields.
Through hospitality.
Well, the question is, I mean, that statement is kinda way out there, because we definitely probably won't be building no ball field by June twenty twenty.
That's right.
So if we don't use that bond by June twenty twenty, it goes back, right? So that's a million dollars, a million plus, that we're gonna lose if we don't use the money by twenty twenty. And we definitely won't be building no ball field by twenty twenty. We don't have land to build it though, first we gotta find the land. So that's not even, you know, an issue. And forty-one thousand dollars is not that big of a deal when you're talking about that much money sitting in a barn, just sitting there. That's not a lot of money for a park or, I mean, some playground equipment. I think the problem is, it's a location issue here that seem to be the problem. Brian had to say it first, go ahead, just finalize this, now it's been a little time. Did you go ahead and vote on it, vote it up or vote it down?
I've got no problem with the location. I would agree with Ms. Backus, or Councilwoman Backus, that the bond is probably where we should spend it from, because of the deadline that's mentioned by the council person. We can't spend that money on buying land for the ball fields. And there's excavation, there's many things that we can spend it on to get the process rolling for the ball fields. But I share your same concern, that if we don't come forward with a plan as far as what we're gonna do with the city, and spend those funds, then we're gonna have an issue in a few short months. I've got no problem with this, as long as we can legally do it.
I would like to make a motion that we purchase the equipment, playground equipment for Bowen Manor Park, as long as we do it legally.
I would second that.
As long as it's done in the right playground, we put in the total forty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-three cents, as long as it's done legally. Show your hands. Okay, names. Got two names and five motion carriers, purchase the equipment. Thank you. Um, we wanna thank Dixie Cup for writing her letter of approval for getting the EDA grant. They helped us out with that, and that was very rewarding. We have little Adam, was it Adam, Abraham Atkins? For Dixie? The manager there, yeah, they wrote a letter, and that helped us get the EDA grant, and we'll have a pool, okay? Mr. Dog, let me have something to talk about the Coe House.
County Council's calling for a special work session tomorrow morning at the Raceway Media Center. They're meeting at nine a.m., and they're gonna get an update on the status of consideration for a new judicial courthouse facility. We just got this meeting yesterday, so I wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow at nine a.m. it's gonna be in the, they're on the Raceway Media Center. And again, the update on the status of consideration for a new judicial courthouse facility.
As you know, if you've been to Coe House lately, the Treacher's office is looking brand new. They've done something to probate Judge's office, and now they're working on the county office. They have lots of people that's in. And so they are still doing things, so you go in the morning to find out what else they're gonna do, because they're still in a takedown. They take a little bit each office, so you see it in the morning and night, so. Ms. Reed?
I'd like to, before we do, I would like to make this presentation to Councilwoman Backus, that she's heading up the restoration or cleanup of the Darlington Cemetery. My little portion of two hundred and fifty dollars, I'm giving that to you today.
Thank you very much, I'm in the shooter cemetery to receive your funds. Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I'd just like to thank the administration, the COG, our state representatives, and our federal representatives for the help of the EDA grant. It's really, really great work that our administration and all the different parks did. And thanks to Howard and the rest of y'all for what y'all done.
They had four new lift stations, which is well needed. Next for a long time, having problems with some of them, most of them. So now we're getting it rectified in.
So they insured our growth in the body.
Yes, the growth on the bypass helped with that tremendously. So we can secure it, with the new school coming up also. On November the fifth, remind us, two thousand nineteen, seven a.m. and seven p.m., City of Dalton will initiate reelection. On November the twelfth, six thirty p.m., a regular Monday, the EDA, Dalton City Council. Can I get that, what you wanna do, Brian, what you wanna say there, Brian?
I'd like to motion adjourn.
I love you. I second.
All right, baby, show your hands.